And now, live from downtown Amarillo, Texas. This is the Amarillo Pioneer Podcast. Here's your host and the editor of the Amarillo Pioneer, Thomas Warren.
Thank you everyone for listening to the Amarillo Pioneer Podcast again tonight. And we're excited to be continuing our coverage of the May 6th election, speaking with another candidate who is running this year. This candidate is running for Amarillo City Council, place number four. And that is a fairly crowded race to replace Howard Smith, who has been on the city council since 20, I guess, 2017. And he's not running for reelection. Four candidates are running in that race and we're speaking with one of them tonight. The candidate joining us this evening is Hobert Gunny Brown. He's making his second run for city council this year. He is a military veteran and a local community volunteer. I think there's so many ways you could describe Gunny, but I'll let him describe himself here in just a minute. But before we get into everything, why he's running and the priorities he wants to tackle, let me just ask, Gunny, thanks so much for being with us and how are you doing this evening?
I'm doing good. How about yourself?
I am doing great. I appreciate you joining us. And for anyone who's not familiar with you, well, let me rephrase that. I think most of Amarillo is familiar with you probably at this point. But for those who have been living under a rock, why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you decided to run for city council this year?
I will. Well, first off, I'm originally from Delhard, Texas. I went to school there until halfway through my senior year and then I transferred to D W Carter out of Dallas, Texas, where I graduated from there. After completion of high school, I joined the United States Marine Corps. From 1984 to 2004, for a total of 20 years and one day, I was a US Marine. I retired with the rank of gunny sergeant. During my time in the Marine Corps, I visit every continent except for the continent of Antarctica. I received a Purple Heart for actions during Desert Storm and Desert Shield. I have been a federal employee for the last 15 years and I just love my community. That's what I'm all about. I'm about being servant to the community and making Amarillo a better place.
Absolutely. Well, let's just go ahead and jump right into the issues you want to tackle this year. What are some of the top priorities that voters can expect you to address if you get elected to the city council this May?
Well, the first issue is trust because you cannot, that's the foundation of everything. We can talk about taxes, we can talk about roads, we can talk about crime, we can talk about all this other stuff, but if the citizens do not trust you, you're not doing nothing. And with trust becomes leadership. You know, you can talk about taxes and roads and crime and all that, but first you got to be a leader. And with that leadership, you have to, you have to build trust on that. All a city council person is, is a position, positional leadership. That's all it is. People do not do things just because you're a city councilman. You have to move into the next phase of leadership and that's permission. You know, like I've told people, leadership is more than just a position. It's the art of getting people to do things that they normally wouldn't do, which is built around trust. So that's the first thing I want to do is trust. Once I get the trust by being out there shaking hands, talking to people, doing town halls, I can find out what the real issues are because we all know that one person's issue might not be the other person's issue. What I feel, I might feel that a wagon need to be painted blue, but the majority of the population might feel that needs to be painted red. So I need to get out there and actually see what the people are talking about. That's the number one thing right there is trust and find out what the people in Amarillo actually want and be in their voice at city halls.
Absolutely. Well, let's talk about your experience as a veteran and as a federal employee a little bit. And I want to specifically focus on your experience in the military. You know, you're a decorated veteran. You have done a lot with volunteerism for veterans and for people in our community here in Amarillo. But what benefit could people expect if they elect a veteran with long time military experience in the city council this year? Is there anything as far as leadership experience or leadership skills that you think would come to the forefront more so than electing another candidate?
Well, the first thing is by being a veteran, I mean, you know, since 1984, I have served at the will of the President of the United States. Now, I'm not saying that the President of the United States is going to come down to Amarillo, Texas, walk into the office of the VA and says, hey, Hobert Brown is fired. That's not going to take place. However, though, most of my daily work is derived from the president, from the cabinet members and whatnot. So with over 40 years of that experience, one thing that I have learned is that there's a bigger picture. The picture is not always about me. It's about the big picture. It's about how we serve. Now, through them timeframe since 1984 till now, I can tell you right now, I can name every president that I have ever served under. And each one of them, I can tell you some good things about them and I can tell you some bad things about them. There's some decisions that they had made that I'd like, woo, that's a good one. And then there's some decisions that was made that I said, oh man, that sucks. But hey, I still carry out the mission. And that's what about a city council person needs to understand that it's not about you. It's about the bigger picture. It's about, it's about how do we get jobs into Amarillo? How do we fix these streets? How do we take care of crime? How do we bring more jobs here to Amarillo? How do we stop panhandling? That's what it's about. I'm not a person that's about, when I talk about that I'm a people person and I'm about the citizens of Amarillo, that's what I'm about. Like I said earlier, I've been on in every continent except for Antarctica. So I have talked to people of diverse backgrounds. I have sat down with a Muslim and he had his Quran and I had my Bible and we, we referenced both of them out there. We walked away disagreeing with each other, but we walked away with having more respect with each other. And when we, and, and this was while we was guarding something. Both of us had the same mission, but yet we was able to come to common ground on our religion and whatnot. And that's what you'll get from me. You know, a lot of these other candidates, I'll go ahead and say it, I'm not about slinging mud, but their rhetoric tells you that they're only about one thing. They're only about their base. They only about endorsement. They only about who's going to put money in their campaign. I'm not about that. I'm about what's good for the people. I'm about doing my homework to see what is going to take place. You know, right now I have proven that out of all the candidates, I'm out there doing town halls. I'm not waiting for some forum to come around so they can ask me some generic questions about what do I think about this? No, I'm out there talking to the real people who's out there. I'm coming to them. I'm not having them come to me. So, so you're going to get a worker. You're going to get somebody to believe in servant leadership with a lot of, lot of candidates nowadays have no idea what servant leadership is.
Sure. Well, let's just go ahead and talk about one of the biggest issues of this election and that is the civic center. I know you followed the Civic Center project well when it went to court this past year. You were part of the original campaign that pushed against the, the bond that kind of kickstarted this whole thing in 2020. And you know, the bond failed. The city council tried to do a Civic Center project anyway, went to court and a lot of stuff came out in that courtroom and Judge Souters ruling that really put that attempt to do the project in a negative light. However, you talked to people in Amarillo, there's still a lot of people who say, we got to do something about the Civic Center. So if you were elected to the city council, will addressing the Civic Center be one of your top priorities? And if so, how do you plan on going about doing that?
No, it won't be one of my top priorities. Simple fact is because the Civic Center is a tainted fruit right now. All right, people have a bad taste in their mouth. Let's go back to the original statement I made. Until people have a city council that they can trust and they believe in it, the Civic Center is a done deal. Unless somebody walks in here with a check for, I'm just going to throw the number out there, $260 million. And then we can name that Civic Center after them. If I had $260 million right now of expenditure, expenditure funds, guess what? The Civic Center has been named the Hobert Gunny Brown Civic Center. But I don't have that money. So the Civic Center is a done deal. We need a Civic Center, but it's the last thing on my priority list. Quite honestly, it's not even on my priority list. I had made a promise to myself that I wouldn't even entertain this question, but because it's UT3, I will. Anybody else, I tell them, it's why are we even wasting our time with this conversation?
Sure. I appreciate you answering my question. I really do. You're a hard man to get to interview. So you know, it's, I feel like a big winner tonight. But I'm going to ask you a question I think is, it's fairly timely. At the time we're recording this, I'm sure you probably saw the news recently that Jeff Blackburn, a longtime local attorney, who was a respected figure for many reasons, he ended up passing away a little while ago due to cancer. And you know, we wish his family well and we wish them condolences. But I want to address an issue that I think is, it's still an issue, but you know, without Jeff Blackburn, I don't know exactly who's, you know, going to really be talking about it as much. And that's the issue with the municipal court. You know, Jeff filed that lawsuit back in 2016 and went to federal court that really addressed some of the issues at the municipal court. Ultimately, it kind of got tossed out of court, but still, you know, proponents of that lawsuit said, hey, this is an issue that's not going away about the way the municipal courts being run, about some people are being unfairly ticketed. And basically they alleged that it kind of operated like a debtor's prison. And you can take that however you want. You can address that if you'd like. But there's also been a push in recent years where people have said, hey, we actually need to follow the, you know, the lead of some cities like El Paso and other major Texas cities, most major Texas cities, where we elect our municipal judge instead of having the municipal judge appointed by the city council. That would take a charter amendment to do that. But as a city council member, what, is that something you would support? Would you support reforms of the municipal court and specifically moving the position of municipal judge to an elected position rather than appointed position?
You know, oh, that's a, that's a double edged sword no matter how you look at it. Because like my daddy used to always tell me, if you're going to go to the dance, you got to pay the fiddler. So however, if, if they're election, these judges wanting to be elected, so they're going to say what they need to say to get elected. Okay? And then, you know, on the same note, if they are appointed, you know, who knows? Who knows? You might actually have an individual up there on the city council who, somebody might have actually put a little money in that person's campaign. So now they feel that that person is the best qualified person for, for the job. But let me, let, let's talk about that one time, a little while. And dangerous people. Okay. You know, and Jeff Blackburn is the perfect person. While I was going to school to become a social worker, I did a paper on Tullia. And a young lady was in my class and I'll leave what talent she was from. But she was the only child. She had a little money in her pocket and she could not understand why come people that claim to be innocent would take a plea deal. And there was another young man in my class who was not in, not from Tullia, but circumstances were that he had gotten in trouble with the law, had no money. And like, like we told this person, when you're looking at 30 years and they tell you if you do a plea for five, well, five is less than 30. And most people would take that deal, innocent or not. Because right now, let's just face it, people can say whatever they want to. Our court system is busted. And that's not a black thing, that's not a white thing, that's not a Hispanic thing. When you have more people who cannot afford a good lawyer and they're waiting for a point, a point, appointed lawyer who is going to come in there and see maybe two days before the actual trial or maybe even one day or the day of the trial. And the first words out of their mouth is, you need to plead. They're going to take that deal. They're going to take that deal because life is too precious. So as a city council member, I would have to do some serious homework on that. I would have to talk to people like Afondo Vaughn. I would have to talk to people like Judge Thomas. I would have to talk to some creatures that I know before I could really actually make a good decision about that. I'm not going to sit here and say right now that I'll go either way. I know some people out there will want me to go some way so they could support me, but that's not me. I'm not going to do that because right now there's, there's, there's too many people that are in jail for a long period of times that should not be in jail for a long period of time. Now, don't get me wrong. I believe in that Robert Blake story, due to crime, due to time. But come on now, there, there, there are just too many people that are in jail, jail for nonviolent crime for majority of their adult life.
Yeah. And people sitting in jail right now for crimes they didn't commit.
Hey, I, I wasn't going to go there, but you, but you said it, so.
No, I mean, I think that's, you know, that's something we got to, you know, address. I, well, you know, we're not going to go down that rabbit hole right now, but yes. Anyway, on to the next subject. I will mention, you know, talking about crimes people did not commit. Jeff Blackburn was a part of the Innocence Project. I think he actually was the founder of the Texas Innocence Project, co-founder. And they did, yeah, they did a lot of good work there. Yeah.
Yes. And Jeff, and Jeff was a fighter. He, he was a fighter in the courtroom and he was a fighter in life. So I mean, I have nothing but respect for Jeff Blackburn. I am thankful that I never did need his services. I have, I have referred individuals over to see him for my work that I do with other organizations here in Amarillo. But like I, like I would tell them, it's, it's not up to me to figure out if you're innocent or guilty. Get you a good lawyer and let them take it, take you to court. Let the court system figure it out.
Let the process work. Yep. Well, I'll ask you one final policy question before we get into the fun stuff. I can't believe we've almost been going for a half hour already, but this one final policy question, I've been asking everyone this and it's such an interesting question because it's something that's really important to the area, but we just don't ever really think about it at election time. And that is the issue of water. You know, the Texas Panhandle, yeah. The Panhandle lives and dies on water because we have agricultural communities, the farming and ranching communities. Here in the city, we need water. We, we have these nasty, nasty droughts every year. You know, it creates wildfires, it creates just, it creates a lot of problems for our economy and our community. But you know, in the past, we've had city councils who've said, well, you know, to conserve water, maybe you should water your grass on Tuesdays instead of, you know, Wednesdays or something like that. But if you're elected to the city council, you know, Amarillo is a growing city. The whole state of Texas, the population is just booming, but Amarillo is growing too. If you're elected to the city council, how are you going to make sure that Amarillo has the access to the water it needs to continue to thrive as the population grows?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question. I am really glad that you asked that question because I have sat down with Floyd Hartman, Assistant City Manager, and he is like the water guru of the Texas Panhandle. And he has showed me some things that I never had thought about before. You know, we have, we have purchased lots of water rights. Okay? And one thing that he has showed me is that we have to be smart about our water right purposes. And one thing that he showed me that, you know, and I don't, I'm an old farm kid, okay? I'm a farm kid. Don't, so, so when we buy water, we're not buying water in strong ag community. Reason being is because ag community uses a lot of water. We're buying, we're buying water outside of the ag community. Now, we have to be smart about it. We have, you know, because when we buy water, we're not buying water for me and you to turn on the faucet tomorrow. That's not something to do. And by the way, I am also working on my Class C water license. So I would be a Class C water guru. So I will know about more stuff about water than I need to know about.
Sure.
Anyway. And, and it's amazing what it takes just to turn on our faucets every day. But when we buy water, we're not buying water for me and you to turn on the faucet tomorrow morning. We're buying water for, you know, I have a six year old niece. That's what I'm buying water for. I'm buying water for her. You know, we can go back to the good old, oh shoot, Neil Gibson movie. Got me out, T3.
Which one?
The last one, the last one he did. Not Neil Gibson, but oh shoot, you know, the series of them. But anyway, the greatest commodity was water.
Sure.
How the guy was holding the water from people. And, and, and people don't realize that here within the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years, water is going to be more precious than fuel. Water is going to be more precious than water. So we have to be smart about it. You know, I'm, you know, I remember back in 2011 when we had that water shortage and everything. Man, I had the most beautiful yard I could ever have. And then when they talking about, well, you got to water your grass only one, once a week. I'll be honest with you, I was one of the person that said BS, I worked too hard for this. I'm, I'm paying it. I'm going to water it. However, though now, I have made it my personal belief that I have to help save water. And one way that I save water is by, I turn the shower on, I don't give it five, 10 minutes to warm up. I'm usually in it within two minutes because, you know, American, we're, we're, we're pretty spoiled when it comes to water. You go to Africa where they get eight waters, eight gallons of water per day, we waste eight gallons when we flush a toilet.
Sure.
So, so we have to be smart. We have to be smart. And, and as a city council member, I will support Floyd Hartman in his purchase of buying water. I mean, if he tells me that he needs $20 million, first off, I'm going to have to articulate that to the public that, hey, we're going to spend $20 million on water. All right? That's so people will know. And I'll be honest with you, right now, we'll go back to the Civic Center. If you gave me a choice of buying water rights or paying for a Civic Center, I'm going to pay, I'm going to buy water rights because that's the long range. That affects all 250,000 people of Amarillo and the people who visit this town.
Sure.
Where Civic Center will not do that. So I appreciate you asking that question because I think that's a question that really needs to be addressed. We need more focus on. And it's not a question that's very seldom ever asked. So I mean, I could talk an hour on that question, be quite honest with you, but there's no need to do that.
Sure. Well, this year we've changed things up. You know, you've interviewed with us before and we've kind of shaken things up this year because we want people to get a chance to know who Hobert Brown is off the ballot. When you're not running for office, who you actually are. And so we have some fun get to know you questions. We could just jump right into them if you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay. What's your favorite thing about Amarillo?
What's my favorite thing about Amarillo? Okay, I'm going to use a key, a cliche and it's, you ought to know me by now, I don't say things just to be saying it, but it's the people. It's the people. I mean, you know, we're 200,000 strong. I can, I can meet somebody at a restaurant and I can say, man, your voice is familiar. Man, I, your face is familiar. Where do I know you from? And we can get the talking and we'll find out, well, hey, you know, you're a veteran, I'm a veteran. We were both standing in line at the pharmacy at the VA. So, so that's one thing I love about this town that it's not like New York or somewhere where people are just mean to each other because they're never going to see each other. We are somewhat forced to be nice to each other because there is a possibility that we're going to see that person again.
Well, the next big fun question we have is what's your favorite restaurant in Amarillo? And what's your go-to order when you go there?
Okay. Now, since in my full-time job, I deal with a lot of people that come to Amarillo. And that's their, their question is, where do I go to get something that's not chain orientated? And I tell them to go to Cow Bluff. Okay? My go-to order is the hotter than hell burger. That is my go-to one right there. And matter of fact, Cow Bluff, I think you owe me some money for, you know, being, being your marketing manager.
Pitching that for them. Yep. Who is the most influential person in your life and why?
Okay. The influence, most influential person in my life is my dad. That, that is, that is the most influential person in my life. My dad taught me what it's about to be a hard worker. My dad taught me what it's like to be a Christian man. My dad taught me what it's like to be a man of your home. I mean, I could go on and on. He is, he is my hero. That's one reason that, you know, I have eight tattoos, but seven of them you can't see. But my eight tattoo, you can see him as a pair of Pistons with his name across because he was a mechanic, he was a farmer. So, and a lot of times when I trying to make decisions or trying to do stuff, I look at that tattoo and I say, what would he do? And I know a lot of people say, well, that's the go-to, that's the easy one. The second most influential person in my life was a man who lived across the street from me named Leon Church. You know, he the one that taught me what it's like to be, run for office, what it's like to be accepted, who I am. He's the one that no matter where we went in this town or out of this town, we went to Republican convention, he would meet somebody and he would always say, this is my friend. This is my good friend. So it was that he, he let people know that he accepted me no matter what I believe in and everything. So I know he probably won't hear this podcast, but matter of fact, neither one of them will hear this podcast since I buried my dad in August. But hey, those are the two most influential persons of my life.
Absolutely. Well, for those listening who are undecided in this race, they don't know who they're going to pick yet, would you mind just giving them a quick elevator pitch and tell them why you are the guy who needs to be in that place four seat on the city council?
That's easy. What you, it's what you get. I mean, I'm not, I'm not worried about endorsement. I'm not worried about saying all the right things. I'm worried about being me. You know, this election is over with on May 6th. Around nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, we should have the results. It can only go one or two ways. Either you win or you lose. Some people like to say, well, you can be in a runoff. Yeah. I like to just say, either you win or you lose. May 7th, I'll probably take a day off, go have breakfast with my wife, go to church. But other than that, May 8th, I still got work to do. I'm still going to be doing it. And just like I tell people all the time, Google Hobert Gunny Brown. You know, you see what I'm about. It's that simple. All I ask is that when you Google my name, you spell it right. H O B E R P. You see what I'm about.
Sure. Well, for those listening who want to get a yard sign or donate or knock on doors or just do something to get Gunny Brown elected to the city council, how can they go about doing that?
They can call 806-672-5641. And my, just leave a message or you can email, I mean, or you can text me at that number. You can go to my Facebook page, Hobert Gunny Brown. text me at that number. You can go to my Facebook page, Hobert Gunny Brown. Private message me there, or you can contact me via email at hobertgunnybrownjr@outlook.com. I don't have a webpage. I think that's a waste of money.
Understand. Well, Hobert Gunny Brown, we really appreciate you being with us. And for anyone listening, you know, you've still got some time to make up your mind, but at this point you need to be making some decisions. And we really hope that you got a chance to know Hobert Gunny Brown a little better tonight. But like I was saying, Gunny, we really appreciate you being with us and we wish you all the best on the campaign trail, sir.
I thank you, my friend.